Discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. And the items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on September 2nd, 2014, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $739,945.74. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $12,109.58. Item G, write-off of ambulance bad debts. Item H, resolution number 5677, adopting amendment number three to the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works Employee Health Plan, removing all references to pre-existing conditions and amending the definition of dependent in compliance with the Affordable Care Act. Item I, resolution number 5678, placing a stop sign for eastbound traffic on West Scott Street at the intersection of West Scott Street and Bluff Streets. Item J, resolution number 5679, approving the application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for federal assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program for the purpose of renovating the Scott Street ball fields. Item K, resolution number 5680, terminating tower lease agreement with Charter Communications 4 LLC. And item L, approval of special designated license application to Main Street Beatrice for the Magic of Main Street fundraiser on September 19th, 2014, from 6:00 PM until 12:00 AM at 105 North Sixth Street in Beatrice, Nebraska. Those are the items on the consent agenda. First is anyone in the council wish an item removed for individual discussion? Ted?
Jay isn't John.
Jay isn't John. Anyone else in the council? Anyone in the audience? Seeing no others?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed on the consent agenda, with the exception of item J, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the items listed on the consent agenda, with the exception of item J, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented, is our discussion on the motion from the council. In the audience, your vote please. Motion carries eight to zero. Return back to item J if we could have a resolution on the floor, please, or a motion on the floor, please.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5679 approving application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for federal assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program for the purpose of renovating the Scott Street ball fields. Be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that resolution number 5679 approving an application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for federal assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program for the purpose of renovating the Scott Street ball fields be approved. And Ted, you have the floor.
I don't have a problem with it. I just know that I'm going to feel questions about it, and I was just hoping you could give me a little more of the scope.
Sure. The scope of this project, what we're going to be applying for is to move, to install a new playground on the north side of what is today Scott Street. It's currently a dirt parking lot area there. We're going to look to turn that into an ADA-accessible handicapped playground area. While doing that, we're going to look to connect to our trail system and bring that trail system into the Scott Street ball fields. That will serve a couple purposes. One will be an extension of the trails. Two, it'll provide ADA accessibility from some new ADA parking stalls we're going to put in on the west side, on the northwest side of that parking lot over there.
On the big diamond?
Yes.
The two smaller ones?
The two smaller ones on the north side.
Okay.
And then on the south side as well, we're looking to add some ADA parking over there as well. And this would help tie in all of those parking areas, allow ADA accessibility to all of the ball fields then, the concession stands, the tavern, the, it's not a tabernacle, it's a picnic shelter. It would do all those. Phase two and phase three ultimately are in the future. Those may include some batting cages, things like that, but we're working with the Beatrice Bullets Organization and the YRI Organization to see exactly what their wants and needs are, and if they have anything, they can contribute to the process.
Your timeframe is, what, two years?
Yes, if we're successful on this, generally it's a two-year grant process before we actually begin construction.
Okay. Thanks.
Further discussion, Rich?
When you bring that trail across, that'll come across the street, won't it? Are we going to be looking at signage for yield or stop?
We will. At that point, we look to bring, come back to you and have a crosswalk put in across Center Street. Right now, the trail connects there, comes back towards the west, stops when it hits Center Street. We'd look to extend it on to the west side of Center Street. At this point, it would get as far west then as the parking lots there, but it would be somewhat of an extension in this first phase.
And then Jason will look at some signage for that then?
Yes.
Yields or stops or something?
As we, if we become successful and as we start to build things, we'd come back and look for some additional signage to be put in.
Okay.
Further discussion from council members? How about anyone in the audience? No further discussion. Your vote please on the motion. Motion carries eight to zero. Next, we'll hold a public hearing on the second year of the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 biennial budget. That public hearing is now open. We've reviewed the past year's budget with the council in the previous work session. Tobias, do you want to provide any information as far as what's here? Maybe the executive summary for the people in the audience and people at home?
Yeah, what we can talk about is, we do not need to amend this current year's fiscal budget. We don't need to amend that, and that's why you don't have any type of resolution amending that budget tonight, largely because expenditures have come in less than anticipated, so therefore there's no amendment needed. Tonight, what we're talking about is the budget for FY '15, that being next year. And in your packet, Linda provided you with some synopsis of what is happening to the budget that's different from what we originally talked about. You'll see that the revenues, the net revenues are the same. Where they're coming from changes a little bit. The municipal equalization funds are lower than we anticipated for next year, but we believe that sales tax will be a little higher as they have come in this year, and so the net effect on revenues is zero. When you look down to the expenditures, you'll see that the expenditures have changed. Largely, all of the changes have been because of capital projects carrying forward from this fiscal year to next fiscal year. One such project again is the Highway 77 project that State Department of Rose is currently doing. It's a $645,000 project. We have not been billed for that project yet. We had originally budgeted for this year, we need to move it to next year. All of the changes that we have in the budget are due to the lid form that Linda needs to complete and send in. And if you want, we can walk through the formula that's in here, but one of the things in the formula has to do with capital improvements. In order for the lid formula to match what our budget will do, that's why you have a few of the changes that are highlighted in your packet. Again, they all have to do with capital expenditures being moved forward to next fiscal year.
Okay, we'll turn the floor open to discussion. Discussion, questions, and comments from any council member.
We've only got a bonded indebtedness of 188 or 189?
The only bonds that are outstanding on the city's side would be the public safety debt. BPW has some, but the city, that's all the city has.
Who am I thought it was?
Floor is open, gentlemen. While you're all thinking, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments regarding the second half of the city's budget for this coming year? Back to the council, anyone? There's no other discussion, we can close the public hearing. We will have an ordinance if there's any questions that arise, and you can certainly ask them in.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:12 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale to close the public hearing at 7:12. Discussion by the council, by the audience. Your vote please. Motion carries eight to zero. Next, we'll introduce an ordinance to adopt the biennial appropriations bill for fiscal years 2014 and 2015 in the amount of $42,237,769 for fiscal year 2014, and $46,202,920 for fiscal year 2015.
Mayor, I move that ordinance be given number 14-022. The title therefore be approved and the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale, that said ordinance be given number 14-022. The title there be approved, rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is non-debatable. Your vote please. Motion carries eight to zero. Ordinance number 14-022 by number the first time, ordinance number 14-022 by number the second time, and ordinance number 14-022 by number the third and final time tonight.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 14-022 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale, that ordinance number 14-022 be passed and approved. Again, the floor is open to anyone for discussion, comments, questions. How about the audience, anyone? One more time, the council. If there's no discussion, then I'll ask for your vote, please. Motion carries eight to zero. Ordinance number 14-022 has been passed and approved.
Mayor, I move to increase the total restricted funds authority for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2014, and ending on September 30th, 2015, by an additional 1% as authorized in section 13-519 of the Nebraska Revised Statutes.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale, to increase the total restricted funds authority for the fiscal year beginning in October 1st, 2014, and ending on September 30th, 2015, by an additional 1% as authorized in section 13-519 in Nebraska Revised Statutes. Who wants to explain this annual happening?
I certainly can try, but I may look to Linda to help me explain this one.
Only just let Linda do it. You want to explain it, Linda?
Your restricted funds authority, basically you're taxing dollars, you have your local taxes of sales taxes and property taxes, then you have your state aid of highway allocation dollars and municipal equalization funds. And you could only increase those a certain amount every year, and so this motion is strictly increasing your base by 1%. It doesn't mean you're going to use them all. It just means that the statutes have authorized you to increase them 2% every year without a vote, and you can increase that authority to levy those dollars an additional 1% and making it a 3% total. Now, it doesn't mean you're actually going to ask for them, it just builds your base, and you'll see a motion later where you're going to approve the unused restricted funds authority, and that carries forward to future years. And it doesn't necessarily have to do with property tax dollars, but let's say you had a huge increase in sales tax, or the way municipal equalization funds go up and down every year, then that authority to have those total dollars be a certain amount is there for you.
And we've been doing this for about the last 18 years that I can recall, and we haven't spent anything but heavy to do so, if you need to.
So we're, can I jump in?
Yes.
So we're at what now, and we're given the authority to go to where?
Well, our total restricted funds, I think that's the number you're looking for, is just a little over $7 million.
Okay. And that represents a percentage of what? Is that right at 2%? And that she's, she had given us, we're given an authority to go to 3? Are you right at the 2% with that $7 million number?
I guess I'm not understanding what.
So, we can go up to the, we can go up to 2%, Linda, is that correct?
You automatically-
I'll go past you, Tobias. Because I, because I, she's probably going to, I'm not asking it well, so.
Do you have, I think you guys have these pages in there, the lid forms?
Yep. Yeah.
But anyway.
I read it, I didn't get it.
And it's 7 million less your debt and your capital, which gets you down to 5,147,910.
Yep.
You automatically increase it 2% on the form. Statutes provide that. That just is automatic, then, as-
That's what I didn't get.
The governing body, you can say, well, we want to reserve an additional 1% authority.
All right. All right. I didn't realize, I didn't get it, the automatic number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now I do understand it. Thank you.
And in 18 years, I don't think we've ever used it, but we do it every year.
Well, you'd think after all this time I wouldn't have to ask, and I think I probably ask every year.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I really get worried when I start to understand it, then.
Well, then we're in trouble. I, yeah, I should understand it, and then I read it, reread it, looked at it again, and went, that didn't make any sense, but I didn't realize that was automatic. Thank you. And I didn't, Tobias, I looked past you, that was my fault, I didn't ask it very well, and she understood what I was asking, so.
No problem.
That was on me, so, thank you.
That's why we go down to Linda and say, do we need to vote for this? And she said yes, and we go, okay.
Well, that isn't quite how I do it, but I do want to understand, so, thank you.
Any other council discussion? How about the audience, anyone? Back to the council. Okay, your vote on the motion. The motion passes eight to zero. Next, we'll hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2015, final property tax request. That hearing is now open. And should we bring Linda in, or do you want to handle this one?
Well, as we talked about, when we set the budget a year ago, and as we reviewed here about a month ago, the budget that you passed called for a property tax rate increase in the second year. And so, what you have before you is a resolution increasing the levy to .370223. That's an increase of a little under 3, about 2.5 cents is what the increase is. Again, those dollars are used for projects that we have already budgeted for. Largely, that project that is coming forward with that money would be the extension of the trails from the water park to Hannibal Park. That's where a lot of this money has been earmarked for.
Okay, comments and discussion under the public hearing?
Well, already, Mayor?
What's that? Oh, yeah. How about in the audience, anyone? Council, discussion? Seeing none.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:20 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by, was that Cook?
Yep.
By Cook, that the public hearing be closed at 7:20 PM. Discussion on that motion from the council, from the audience. And your vote please. Motion carries eight to zero. This time, we'll introduce resolution number 5681, setting the property tax request for the City of Beatrice for fiscal year 2015, in the amount of $2,132,596.82.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5681 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that resolution number 5681 be passed and adopted. And discussion.
And that number represents what comparative to last year?
Last-
Is that something I'm going to get asked?
Last year, our total request was $1,987,830, so an increase of about $150,000, which is, if you look at your budget, is about the amount of that one project.
Yep.
And then, as we stated, in order to generate that much revenue off of the valuation that we have, sets your levy at the .37.
Okay. I, that I thought I had the math done right, but I know that's something I was going to get asked, and I want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, further council discussion? Audience discussion? Council, one more time? And your vote on passage, please. Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution 5681 has been passed and adopted. Next, we'll introduce resolution 5682, calculating the amount of unused restricted funds authority to be $730,072.34.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5682 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that resolution number 5682 be passed and adopted. We better let Linda do this, right? Linda?
Well, this is just what we talked about before. You increased your restricted funds by 2% plus 1%, then we calculated how much you actually used, and that leaves a balance of $730,072.34 that will be carried forward to future years' budgets, should you need it.
Okay. Discussion?
And that compares to about the same as last, I think last year was $740,753, close.
Discussion from council members?
Yeah.
How about the audience?
Bring that up. Yeah, I should. I would probably pay for my boat ramp.
I totally leave alone.
There's not going to be a boat ramp, we know better than that.
The water's up, we could have a boat ramp.
We can just jump off the side of the bank, then. Okay, any further council discussion? Your vote on the resolution, please. Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution number 5682 has been passed and adopted. Next, we'll introduce an ordinance establishing water rate charges for customers of the Board of Public Works System of Beatrice.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 14-023. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale, that said ordinance be given number 14-023. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is non-debatable. Your vote please. Motion carries eight to zero. Ordinance number 14-023 by number the first time, ordinance 14-023 by number the second time, and ordinance number 14-023 by number the third and final time tonight.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 14-023 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale, that ordinance number 14-023 be passed and approved. Tobias, for the, I guess the executive summary?
Yeah, as we discussed last month, we were reviewing the budgets, what we have proposed to you tonight is a $1 per month increase in the monthly service charge. This would go in effect for each one of the different classifications you see on page 42 of your packet. In addition, we are proposing a 9 cent increase per 1,000 gallons of usage, and those numbers then correlate through, they're a little different there for Agrium and Coke, they're a little smaller, obviously. The monthly charge is the same, but their usage would increase would be a little bit smaller. Main question is going to be then is what does this mean for the average customer? For the average customer, residential customers, about a $1.56 increase per month. For the average commercial customers, about $4.28 per month. The other change that is before you tonight that came through discussion at the BPW Board was, in the past, we've always had a fee in there for municipal fire hydrants. It was a carryover from many, many years ago. We've never billed the city, the BPW's never billed the city for maintaining and taking care of the municipal fire hydrants. Through the board's recommendation and motion, we have removed that from the ordinance. You'll notice there are private fire hydrants. Sometimes when a large company comes in, Husker Varner is an example, they put in private fire lines. Those fire lines are not hooked up to our water mains, they're hooked up to their own private lines. We do bill them so that we maintain their fire hydrants for them. The municipal fire hydrants are the ones that you see on the street corner, that belong to the city. Our water department goes through, they maintain and take care of those, or we never have charged for, so through the BPW board's recommendation, we have removed that charge from the ordinance.
Okay, we are open for discussion. Ted?
Average customer. I looked at my bill when we talked this, normally, my chief financial officer, my operation, my wife pays all this, and it just comes out of our checking account, and I, so those are things that you look at the total, but I don't usually look at the breakdown. But as we discussed this, last, at our last meeting, I looked at the bill, and obviously I'm not an average customer, because my bill is going to go up more than a $1.56 on the water. So, when you talk about an average customer, for those people here in the community that actually do look at their bill every month and go, what am I paying? What do we do, what, how do, how do you, what do you consider the average customer?
Sure. As part of the rate study, when Olson's came in and looked at it, they calculated the average customer. So they looked at everybody's usage and came up with an average customer. That average customer used 6,200 gallons per month.
Yeah, he's more than that.
On average. I do as well, but that was, that's what they defined as an average user.
It's, okay, give it to me again, 6,000?
6,200 gallons for residential, or 36,400 gallons for a commercial.
Because I'm going to get asked. All right. I don't have a problem with it, I just needed to know.
Sure.
Okay.
Any further council discussion?
Wait a second. They, let me back, let me back up. So when they gave this average, do you know how they calculated that? Did they just take total amount of water usage in the community, total amount of users, and just do simple math?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's the way they calculate it.
Well, that's how I would have done it, but I, but I, I'm going to get asked.
We gave them the total usage, they had the number of customers, that's the way I would have calculated it, I'm sure that's the way Olson's did.
Realistically, you'll probably use two to three times as much in the summer if you water your lawn than if you-
Yeah.
And you will in the winter.
Yeah.
It does, it isn't the same every month, but-
Right.
Over time, it averages out.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just, this was one of those Jeopardy questions, you know, that she gives to councilmen, so, thank you.
Okay, additional council discussion? Audience, anyone like to comment? Okay, council, one more time? And your vote on passage of the ordinance. Motion carries eight to zero. Ordinance number 14-023 has been passed and adopted. Next, we'll introduce an ordinance establishing sewer rate charges for customers of the wastewater treatment system of Beatrice.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 14-024. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that said ordinance be given number 14-024. The title there be approved, rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is non-debatable. Your vote on the motion, please. Motion carries seven to one with council member-
Me. I did, Dennis.
Fairbanks, voting no. Ordinance number 14-024 by number the first time, 14-024 by number the second time, and 14-024 by number the third and final time tonight.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 14-024 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance number 14-024 be passed and approved. If you would give us again the executive summary, and I know we have a couple of gentlemen in the audience that would like to speak, we'll get to you fellows in just a little bit here.
The WPC rate ordinance is probably the biggest change from last year. If you recall, rate ordinances in the past for the WPC were one page, and now we've gotten a little bit, a longer rate ordinance, and it has to do with the fact that what we have added is what we call permitted users. Permitted users, there are none of them in the city today. These would be individuals or customers or companies that would come into town in the future and start to use or exclude industrial waste, if you will, waste that's above normal, into our sewer system, and processing on our part to clean the water. When looking at our rate ordinance with Olson Associates, their recommendation was that we implement some type of permitted user class in order to start charging those people to cover the costs that we incur because of the abnormal strength waste that they put into our sewer system. That being said, what you have in here is largely definitions on how you define what that abnormal waste is, how you're going to calculate it, how you're going to have those fees set. fees set. That takes up probably ninety percent of what this rate ordinance has. If you go to page fifty-three of your packet is where you start seeing the rates that are set out. The monthly minimum charge is the same as last year for residential, commercial users. Obviously, we've added permitted users, but for everybody else, it remains the same. The usage fee per thousand gallons is the same as last year. That hasn't changed. What has changed is we are proposing an infrastructure improvement charge of three dollars per month for residential, four dollars per month for commercial. That is the same thing we did for the water department beginning last year. Again, those funds would be set aside for infrastructure improvements. As we've all talked about, the WPC plant, the wastewater treatment plant has significant improvements that need to be made. These funds would be used to help pay for those as we proceed with those improvements. The next classification you have there is the septic waste haulers. In the past, we haven't really had a set policy or practice on how we charge those. And so what we have proposed are the fees that you see in the, in the rate ordinance before you. I will tell you, at the BPW Board meeting, there was some discussion as to whether or not those fees were accurate fees. Are they, are those too high? Are they too low? Where should they be? And the board did ask that I go and get some information from surrounding towns so they could like to review it again at a later meeting. But they went ahead and, as you saw, recommended approval tonight, barring that we go back and look at that a little bit later. Yes?
Are those per month or is that a year?
That would be per time you use the facility.
Time you used, okay.
Yes.
Per use.
And then the other rates you see in there, again, have to do with permitted users. The rate ordinance does not change how we calculate a residential or commercial customer's bill. It doesn't change the fees except for the infrastructure improvement fee. Again, everything else has to do with permitted users, which today there are none in the, in the city.
Can I just give you a very quick example of what a permitted user might be? Hebron, I don't know if they still have a cheese factory or not. They dump quite a bit of nutrient into the sewer system down there. That would be something that may qualify as a permitted user that would put an extra load on the system. And it's gone now?
Yeah.
I know they had it quite a few years, and they were going to great lengths to try to keep, keep all the dairy product out of the sewers as much as they could because they were getting charged extra.
I haven't seen one in the last year and a half delivering there, so I'm assuming no.
Anyhow, that would be an example of a permitted user, one example. I know we have Mr. Lobby here to talk about the septic tanks, but before we go out to the audience, do you guys have some discussion you want to start, start out with?
Well.
Ted?
The residential fee and the commercial fee, I would have liked to seen the commercial fee a little higher, simply because the commercial has not necessarily a way to absorb that, but they can pass it on to their users, and they also have a way to write that off. You know, residential user doesn't. Yeah, you cringe. I know. You, I saw that.
I crank my water up four bucks a month.
They, they're, they have, there's, in everything in the commercial business, you still have an ability to write that away. I mean, you're going to be able to recover some of that. Okay? The residential user isn't going to because he's not running a business, all right? Unless you're running a daycare out of your house, I suppose you can do that, or, you know, something like that. And so I would have liked to seen the, the commercial go up. The residential, I don't have a problem with the residential being raised as it was. I would have liked to have seen a little higher percentage on the commercial rate. The other reason, that was the reason I voted against it. I, I, and I'm glad to see Mr. Lobby here. I had some real concerns about the septic use and the, and the fees, and I have concerns and questions about it, and I guess maybe I'll wait until he speaks, and then maybe that'll answer some of my questions, so. But, and I, but the other part, I, as I read through the, it's not necessarily minutes, but when I read through the recap of the BPW thing here, they said, okay, we're going to pass, they're going to recommend that you pass this, but the charge could be amended a later date. And I, I would like to seen it all done at the same time, but, so those were my concerns. But I'm sure I'll have some, I'm sure Mr. Lobby will probably answer a lot of my questions, or maybe he'll give me more concerns than I presently already have. So I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait until after they're done.
The other option you all have is you can remove the, that portion from the ordinance by amendment if you want to. If, after the discussion's had here, we'll see how it goes. You can decide.
Do you want to amend, amend that commercial rate? I think I'd go with you. Okay.
Let's, let's just have some discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll wait until.
Okay, any further council discussion, Dwight?
We're going to add some fees up, create some new fees. Do we have a way of monitoring like the city park dump station? Or truck can just roll in there at ten o'clock at night or eight in the morning and offload?
The only way you could do it is by putting up some type of camera to monitor what happens at that location. And again, the septic tank hauler or the septic waste hauler wouldn't, that fee would not impact the RV that went down and used the, the city dump station.
The RV, I wasn't worried about. I was worried about someone else coming in. Do we have signs up saying no one to use that except for? I know we have other campers throughout town that come back and go ahead and dump there before they go home.
I couldn't tell you. I'm not sure what the signage is around the dump station. It's not something I've paid a lot of attention to.
There's another, there's another one at the fairgrounds. And usually if somebody wants to sneak around, the rules will just find pretty deserted street and pop open a manhole and do it. Been done a lot.
Yeah, that's, those are some of my concerns that, about the hauling thing, so I have some questions, so I'll wait.
Counsel, further counsel discussion? Okay, out to the audience. Roy, you want to come up and talk? Come on up to the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, appreciate you guys giving me a few minutes here. I'll try and be brief.
We do need your name and address for the record, though.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Roy, excuse me. Roy Lobby, President of Lobby Plumbing, Heating and Air in Wyomar, Nebraska. Our business address is one-one-five East E Street, Wyomar. We've been in business since nineteen sixty-four at that location. Currently, I've been hauling septic waste with a vacuum truck. We clean out septic tanks for rural, private wastewater systems for the last ten years. And we've been dumping occasionally more in the last few years in your treatment plant here in town. Last year, we dumped, we pumped almost a hundred tanks out, and probably eighty-five to ninety percent of those we dumped at your treatment plant. As long as I've been in business, it's been a twenty dollar fee that I've paid to dump per load. I dump at a lot of other towns. Fairberry, for instance, is seven dollars, seven cents a gallon. And a normal load for me is eight hundred gallons. That's what you get out of a thousand gallon tank. On an average, Lincoln charges thirty-seven dollars a thousand. I believe it is, yeah, thirty-seven a thousand. Marysville said they were thirty dollars a load. A lot of the smaller communities don't charge. They just, you know, because I'm occasional user, so they just, you know, I find somebody that'll open up the, the treatment plan or the lagoon and let me dump in there. Crab Works, I work for them every couple of times a year. I go down and clean out their lift pumps, and we just dump in their lagoon for nothing. Of course, I'm working for them. The biggest concern I have is you're going to drive me out of your land, your treatment facility at your proposed increase. That's a seven hundred and fifty percent increase in the rate, current rate. And I cannot pass that on to my customers. I don't feel a hundred and fifty dollars. I have a two thousand gallon truck, even though I'm mostly, at the time, I'm only hauling eight hundred gallons to you at a time, sometimes more, sometimes, you know, even less. Again, that's a seven hundred and fifty percent increase in rates. It's going to generate you guys, based on last year's, just the number of loads I hauled at twenty dollars a load, it was, it'll, it had, looks like thirteen thousand five hundred dollars roughly that I would spend, say, if I hauled another ninety-some loads next year to you. And on your current budget, that's a little over twenty million dollars. That's about a, what, fifty-five hundredths of a percent increase in your budget or item in your budget, where it's a seven hundred and fifty percent increase in my overhead. What it's going to do, I'm afraid you're shooting yourselves in the foot. I won't be dumping in your, your treatment facility. I'll go to Marysville or develop one on my own property, working with the DEQ currently to see what I can or can't do on my own. You're going to have my competitors, or mostly out of Lancaster County, and they're dumping occasionally at your treatment plant when they're in the area. But their mileage, you know, I'm cheaper because I'm close to this area in Gage County. But when they come in, they're charging more because of the extra mileage for them. But instead of dumping in your plant, I'm sure they're going to haul it back to Lincoln and dump it there where it's so much cheaper than what your proposed rate is. So I'm just, want to throw that out so you guys are aware that you're going to lose money and not gain money. And it's such a small percentage of your budget, I really don't see and understand why you want to raise it to such an extreme amount.
What do you think would be a reasonable number, Troy?
Well, I could live with thirty, you know, something like that. I could see an increase. I wouldn't blame you for that at all.
What do we charge?
I just can't pass that on to my rural customers, you know? A lot of these people are older people that, you know, the rural community is all, like, is aged, you know, are getting old, widows, and they're on pretty tight budgets, a lot of them, you know? And it's an emergency situation. They don't call me just for routine pumping, although since this came out in the paper today, I had the biggest day I've ever had for phone calls. I'm not sure why, but.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome for that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
A little advertisement for that one.
You know, these people, all that I deal with, and including my company, we spend money in Beatrice, you know? We, we buy stuff. These people come to town, spend money, pay sales tax, eat at your restaurants. It isn't like, it's people that don't, aren't part of your community, I guess is what I'm trying to get to. I'd just like you to consider what a burden you might be putting on these people.
What was our line of thinking for jumping it so high?
When we.
From twenty to a hundred?
When we reviewed the rate ordinance with Olson Associates and when we reviewed it internally, when looking at the amount of work that's required through the plant process versus the amount of revenue that we're generating, we felt that the fees we proposed were more aligned with what our actual costs were. The twenty dollars is, we feel is low. We did check with some other communities around Fairberry. We did, they were seven cents a gallon. So at eight hundred gallons, that'd be fifty-six dollars is what they're charging you. Auburn's is, what we got was thirty-five dollars plus three dollars and forty cents per thousand gallons that you dump. Seward was thirty-five dollars per thousand gallons that you dump. And so those were a few that we were able to get since the last board meeting at the BPW. Those are some numbers we were able to obtain from some neighboring communities.
Okay. Okay, Ted, so, okay, Roy, so not, not having a lot of, I don't have a lot of background in this, you know, obviously I live in town, we have one, but I, on other property that we own, I do have septic, and they charge a flat rate. So let me, I guess, so my, my knowledge of this is somewhat limited, so bear with me, okay? So our, our current rate of twenty dollars, you've been in business since in sixty-four, so our current rate of twenty dollars has been in place, how long, do you know?
I've been in the septic pumping business for ten years.
For ten years, and we basically.
That's what it's always been.
It's, okay, so, so as far as you know, and as far as we know, as far as I know, we've never raised this.
Not that I, to my knowledge, no.
Yeah, it's not, not to my knowledge either, and I, so for me, going back, you know, close to sixteen, fifteen years, I don't think we've changed this. I'm thinking like in the last two decades, we haven't. So these are my questions to you. So how many commercial haulers do you know that are in our area that use our facility?
I'm really the only one in the area.
That's using yours?
You've got to go to, there's a gentleman in Fairberry that has a small truck on a pickup or something that I think, that does it after hours.
Yeah.
Assuming he dumps everything in Fairberry. And then there's a couple outfits out of Lincoln and Furth area, I believe, that come there occasionally.
Okay, well, these are, this is my concern. My concern isn't necessarily that we're running Roy to a different facility because you, you know, if, if we're going to, we're going to price you, and you want to go to Fairberry, you want to go to Auburn or Marysville, if it's still going to be cost-effective for you, dollars and cents-wise for like your mileage and things, but you're figuring your time because you can't, if you're driving to someplace to drop that off, you're not pumping someplace. So I, you know, I don't want to chase you away, but I want to be able to recoup our, our dollars, and that's Tobias answered my question. You got it from Olson Associates. My concern is that we raise the fee so much that, not that we drive people like Roy to another facility, that we drive people to simply dump it in a ditch someplace. Or, you know, a county road, in a manhole cover, down a city street, culvert, at the park pump station. I, you asked about the signage. I didn't even, I guess I knew that was there for campers. I didn't realize a commercial used that was even, that you could do that. So limited information I have for it. So my concern is not necessarily that we're forcing haulers away from our facility. My concern is that we're forcing haulers to become criminals and dump it someplace that they're, that they shouldn't be. So that was part of my concern. Have we, if we raise the ra, if we raise the rate now to this hundred dollars or somewhat more, we've tracked the number of, we tracked, we presently track the number of dumps that we have annually. So where, are we going to review that in six months? I mean, is that, was that part of the conversation with the BPW? Because they said they were going to come back and talk through, were they going to review it in three months or six months to see if they were taking it someplace else? Were we getting illegal dumping? Because this isn't like trash, obviously, you know? Somebody has an illegal dump site, and they're dumping their garbage, sheriff's office goes out, goes through it, says, oh, we found a name. This isn't the same thing.
No, not, not quite the same thing. I think the intention of the BPW was for us to garner some information about some surrounding communities, come back at the next board meeting for them to review those, those numbers.
Okay. Well, I, I guess from my perspective, I would, I, I appreciate the increase, increasing. I want to cover our costs. This is one of those things that to protect the environment, I would have liked to have had a break-even cost on it instead of a make-money cost on it. So from twenty dollars to thirty or forty dollars, that would have been a bit more palatable for me. And then to see if our dump numbers gone, had gone down or gone up. But I, I, because as Dennis will tell you, that I would assume that a lot of the smaller communities kind of go by what we do. So when we raise rates for like this, then Fairberry will, Auburn will, Marysville will, because then they know they can. So, because they probably hadn't looked at it either. And, and we've seen that in the past, haven't we, Dennis? That, that once, that, you know, it's kind of a Pied Piper syndrome thing, so. That's where I was at with it. I would have liked to seen it at, you know, thirty dollars or forty dollars instead of bigger dump, just to cover our cost instead of trying to make money on it, because I, I don't want illegal dumping.
Well, and you, you, you may have to face the fact, though, that you may not be covering your costs at forty bucks, but that's what the forty or fifty dollars, but that's what the prevalent price is right now. And the problem always, as you say, with going above the prevalent price, is that you do encourage the illegal stuff. And you don't want to do that. We've had that, those issues with garbage and grass clippings and everything else before. We've not made those easily accessible to citizens, so. I think what the board would like to do is take a look at this. Might be the best course of action for the council tonight would, I would suggest maybe you strip this item out of the ordinance, let the board come back to you in two weeks or four weeks and make a recommendation what they think ought to be the, the proper rates if, you know, if that's where you guys want to go with this thing.
That's, I'd be more comfortable with that. And I, I think that, like I said, once we do that, I think you're going to see the surrounding communities take a look at what they're charging as well. And if, and if that's the case, if like if Fairberry doesn't want to do it, if they can still do it at seven bucks, I think, I think Roy's driving.
I think there's seven cents a gallon.
Yeah.
I don't know that I'd want to be out there trying to measure how many gallons you brought in.
Yeah, I don't know how you meter that either, but I.
I'll milk my truck up.
You can open my truck up anytime you like.
That's okay, just leave it like that. We're fine with that. Don, did you wanna say something? You might wanna give us the Board of Public Works' perspective.
I don't know how you meter it.
Do they just trust you, Roy, on the amount that you're dumping in? I mean, is, like, you, you go to Fairberry, I mean...
Well, it's just so much of, well, Fairberry, they just ask us how much we have.
So it's...
There's no way.
I, yeah, well, Phil and I were just having that conversation. If it's somehow... Well, yeah, I mean, if, is it somehow metered, or, you know, by, well, obviously, you can't do it by weight, because...
Some people do, do it by weight. We can't, because the only scale we have is out the landfill, and that would not be convenient for...
But, yeah, but if it's more water than solids, and, ah, there's just, that's just...
Enough of that talk.
Just curious, what, what is the cost of it?
The cost of?
Having us dump there, what's your cost?
Obviously, it depends on, I don't know, how much you're putting in, but it depends on the concentration. I mean, there's a lot of variables when factoring, and what it actually costs.
And what's in it.
Right.
So it'd be, it's a pretty big...
Seems like you gotta be able to calculate that somehow.
You know, the best you can do is kinda come up with some type of average and, and work the numbers that way, that's about the best way you can do it.
You don't know what that is?
I don't, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what the average number is. I couldn't tell you if it's $20 or $100. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Plus your toilet, it's the same stuff, isn't it?
Lot more concentrate.
Yeah, it doesn't change a whole lot, just depends on how many ounces is in there.
Yeah.
Put a couple of boxes of Rid-X in it, and we've got our handle.
Completely different thing, too. Yeah, don't run off, Roy.
Tom Hawkins, I just saw him some great cool... Don, let's get serious here.
Thank you, Mayor. Don Petrowski, Chairman of the Board of Public Works. Gentlemen, we did visit about this extensively at the last board meeting, which was held last Wednesday. And it was brought up, you know, for this particular area that was in the, the proposed ordinance. And we do wanna take a look at that, because everybody on the board felt that the amount seemed pretty excessive. But then we also wanted to take a look at what's fair. And, you know, we're asking for our local residents, we're increasing the rate to $2 a month, which is $24. You know, and if we're gonna be charging Mr. Lobby $20, it didn't seem fair that our people are paying more over the course of time than what we're charging Mr. Lobby. So we wanna come up with a, a fair price. But at the time when we were, the discussion, we didn't have the figures that Tobias gave us tonight to you. We didn't have those figures from Fairberry, we didn't have them from Seward, we didn't have them from Auburn. And we directed to have staff take a look at that and get us some rates, that we can take a look at it next time. That we do wanna be fair and be a, a good steward and a friend to our, to our people, like Mr. Lobby coming in. We wanna be fair, but we know that the rate cannot be where it's at now, because we're already asking our cus, our own residents in Beatrice to pay more over the next year, so that we know we have to come up with that. But we don't know what that figure is. So we're hoping that we can come up with that and present that to you. And the reason why we passed the ordinance intact, so that we can get it up here, so you can act on it tonight, so we can get the year for 2015, 16 to roll. And that is why it's there. Now, if you can take it off, and apparently that can be done in a way that, that you can, you know, pass everything else in that ordinance, except for that, that fee there that we can take a look at, we certainly have that to you here within the next council meeting or a couple of weeks after that. So, we are looking at it, and we are taking it very seriously, and we wanna be fair with that. But that was the consensus of the board.
So if we strip that out, that'll help you out?
What was that?
We stripped this out, let you guys look at it.
Yeah, that, that's, that's our role, and we, we just didn't pull it out, because I don't know, we wanted to keep it intact, so you have a chance to take a look at it. And that's why, when the mayor mentioned earlier, and Tobias, that, you know, the ordinance sits in front of you now, that we could maybe come back and amend that, but if we can, if you can pull it out, and we can, you know, just add it, add a later date, that would be fine with us, too.
While he's sitting here, can I ask him about the commercial rates?
Sure.
So, Don, my concern about the commercial rates versus residential rates, what was the discussion on that?
We felt that if that fit in with our score of things in regards to setting up our budget, and, you know, planning ahead and having some funds available in the next 10 years with Olson Associates' proposed increases that we have, that that is a fair increase to pass along at this point in time. Now, it doesn't mean that next time around, you know, another year at the end of the budget, that that might go up again, but we just didn't wanna make too big of an impact.
So, so you just, you just agreed with what Olson suggested?
Well, not necessarily. We, we know we gotta have X amount of dollars in the next 10 years. And to get there, we were planning in a, and a matter of fact, I think the whole board and the council wants to work together on this, that we put together a package that is not detrimental to our citizens and to our businesses.
I thought we wanted to be business-friendly, I heard that once before somewhere.
What's that?
I thought we wanted to be business-friendly, I heard that somewhere once before.
Yeah, and so, you know, I know, Ted, you mentioned that businesses can absorb this a lot easier than the residential's can. And, and, and you're not wrong in that statement.
That's not what I said.
Yes, it was. You said it was easier for them to absorb it and pass it along than it is for the personal...
I'll settle that, I'll settle that argument for you. We have three places that we can send that charge to. We can send it to our customers, if the market will allow. We can send it to our owners, if we have no other choice, or we send it to our employees by reduced wages. That's, that's how business deals with cost increases.
Correct. And so we wanna be fair, and we didn't wanna make any big increases to where, I think it's easier to go nickel and dime than it is going, holding on, holding on, then go 75 cents a dollar. And it, it fits into the plan of the long, of the, of the overall scheme of things.
Okay, we can talk about either one, we can talk about the infrastructure fee, are you gonna talk about the septic tank? The floor's still open, Dwight?
Back to the septic tanks just for a little bit, and also the permit users. So in the future, when we start doing these percent raises and stuff on everybody else, we'll include these into it. If this fee hasn't been changed in 10, 20, 30 years, we should've been probably doing the same 2% raise, or 5%, 7%?
Yes, it's something we'll look at. Now, you know, we may not look to change it, increase it a quarter or a nickel at a time, we may look to, you know, do it, hold dollars or something like that, just for ease of, when these guys come in, but it's certainly something we will look at yearly.
Bob?
I mean, I, I would certainly be in favor of, of holding off on the septic waste hauler fees, and, and look at a, you know, comparables. I mean, it does make sense, we also need to increase that somewhat, but the somewhat might not be that $100. I guess I also think that, you know, based on, you know, the explanation for business increase, when I look at what we're trying to do for business and industry, and Beatrice and the surrounding areas, I, I would say that that is a reasonable rate at this point in time.
Further council discussion, either topics, anything?
How do we strip that out?
Just make a motion to amend the ordinance to remove Section 6D.
Section 6D.
Is this the appropriate time to do it?
You want to.
So moved.
See, our intentions was that if it was passed in whole, then we would come back and amend it with different rates at a different time. But it's up, up to the council on that.
Let's strip it out now, and let you guys get busy on it.
Oh, we got a motion on the floor by Mr. Kerr to remove Section 6D from Proposed Ordinance Number 14-024, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Claybaugh to remove Section 6D from the proposed ordinance. Now, you can have discussion, but it has to be related to Section 6D.
Can we put a timeframe on it, Mayor? I mean, I, Don, obviously, your group wants to discuss it. Tobias, do we have a timeframe that it needs to be done by? You want it back in a month, you want it back in two months? I mean...
We don't have a timeframe, per se. The next board meeting, I believe, is September 30th.
Well, I'd, I'd rather give them two board meetings to have it discussed, so they can, if, when they bring it back and they discuss it at their board meeting, if other questions arise, like arose from this tonight, I'd, I'd rather have them be able to ask for staff to be able to give them more information, so give them two board meetings to, to bring it back, a proposal back to this body.
Like our second meeting in October, then?
Yeah. Will you have two meetings by then, Don?
Yes.
I think so. I think that's doable.
Then, yeah.
Right, for the time...
Make a request that they do, and if it doesn't, you know...
For the time being, if, you know, if this amendment passes, then the charge is gonna end up being 20 bucks, so nothing changed.
Yeah, yeah, leave it as it is.
As, as...
Fair enough.
As Roy mentioned, it's not gonna make a big difference, one way or the other, at this point.
Well, now, you're gonna be busy. You gotta, you gotta run for the work now, Roy.
Gotta get a lot of work done before October.
We make sure that Roy's notified of when this is gonna be, so he can, if he wants to be here, he can be here.
We can make a note to notify Roy, that's no problem.
Yeah, invite Mr. Lobby to the, to our Board of Public Works' meeting. I think we're meeting on the 29th?
Meeting on the 30th, that Tuesday.
The 30th, okay. Then he would be more than welcome to come.
Okay, we have the amendment on the floor. Is there further discussion from the council on the amendment? How about the audience, anyone? Okay, your vote on the amendment. That motion carries...
I'm sorry.
8-0.
I was, I voted against it, if you guys were gonna go for it, so...
Ordinance Number 14-024 has been amended to delete Section 6D. Okay, now back to additional discussion on Ordinance Number 14-024. To the council. Audience, anyone? Council, again, before we vote. Okay, if there's no further discussion, your vote, please. The motion carries 8-0. Ordinance Number 14-024 has been passed and adopted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Don. Next up is public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for a discussion at a later date. There'll be no action taken by the council at this time. Anyone in the audience have an item for the council, by way of the public forum? Okay, seeing none, you do have the city administrator's monthly report. Anyone have any questions for Tobias or staff?
Just a couple highlights that I wanna point out while you guys are thinking of your questions. On September 17th, the police department's gonna be having a community connections. This is an event where they're looking to have individuals with special circumstances to come out, meet law enforcement, get to know them. The idea here is so that when they show up at somebody's residence, if they can have in advance to know that, you know, the person at that residence may be, sirens is what, is one of their triggering points, or individuals in uniform, something like that, so they have a little more information before they show up at the house, so they have a little better understanding of, of what, what to expect when they get there. And Chief Lang has more information on that, but I believe it's gonna be on Fifth Street on September 17th. Five to nine?
Seven.
Five to seven, so. Another thing, you'll see some additional work being done at Prairie Playground. You'll see a little shade apparatus put up on the little tike section of Prairie Playground. Again, Deanne Casper's was able to go out and secure a grant for the funding of that, or for the purchase of that piece of equipment, and Pete Thoddey and his guys will be installing it hopefully yet this fall. So, if you do see some work out there, that's, that's where that came from. And then, you'll also notice that the alleys downtown have been, being worked on. The one between Fifth and Fourth Street is done and, and open. The one between Fourth and Third is not done yet. I saw the alley approach was not yet poured, so that needs to be done, but I would anticipate that'll probably be done yet this week, and hopefully have that opened up by next Monday or Tuesday, is kinda the plan there. And then, finally, the water department was able to get that third water main project in that we talked about. The water main project on West Court Street was completed, that came under budget, I believe about $30,000. It came in under budget. With those additional funds, we were able to go get a third water main project up around the Garfield area, 16th Avenue, 18th Avenue, up in that area. All the water line is in, they're now in the process of hooking up services and doing the Bactis test and those type of things. So, that project is going well, and hopefully should be done within the next couple of weeks. Other questions that are in the report?
I wonder if they're gonna open Lincoln Street up?
Lincoln Street, I believe, should be open tomorrow by noon, if things went well. I think that was the, the plan.
I, I took one phone call, I'll ask you about it after the meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tobias and staff? Okay, for those in the audience, we are gonna go into the executive session to discuss union negotiations. There will be no action taken after those discussions, after that executive session. Just make note that, to the council and to the audience, that the work session that would normally be held on the 22nd now is rescheduled for the 29th. That will be held in conjunction with the year, fiscal year-end meeting at that same time. And that meeting will be held at City Hall, is that correct?
I believe the intention is to hold it here.
The intention is to hold it here, we just have a mistake in the program. Okay, so it will be here on the 29th. With that, could we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Mayor, I move that the mayor and the city council meet in executive session at 8:07 PM to discuss union negotiations.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Langdale, that the city council going closed session at, is it 8:03?
He said 8:07.
8:07. PM to discuss union negotiations. Your vote?